Everybody ready?
Born ready.
Okay, we're gonna call the meeting door tonight and we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, start with the approval of the agenda. Paul, anything to add, change?
No, sir.
I have nothing.
Dan?
Nope.
Mel?
Tim? I do have a couple of things. I emailed out some information regarding that UN contract. So I've got to add the under old business G2, uh, which we are contract with the MPA administrative.
That the only thing?
That's the only thing I have.
Okay, thank you. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda has changed.
Make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Ryan. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, the consent agenda, questions for administration on consent agenda? Entertained a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Mel. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, mayor's report. Um, we've got a proclamation in here. Bear with me while I read this. Um, the city of Casson recognizing national pregnancy and infant loss remembrance day, whereas infants remembered in silence, Iris, known as Iris, and many other nonprofit organizations work with thousands of parents all over Minnesota and across the United States who have experienced the death of a child during pregnancy and early childhood. And whereas many of these parents live in, deliver in, have a child die in, or bury a child in our community. And whereas infants remembered in silence, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization is founded in 1987 to offer support for parents whose child or children have died from miscarriage, ectopic pregnancy, molar pregnancy, stillbirth, neonatal death, birth defects, sudden explained, unexplained death of a child, sudden infant death syndrome, illness, accidents, and other types of infant and early childhood death. And whereas bereaved parents around the world remember their children annually in their homes or with small gatherings, on October 15th, with a candlelight lighting at 7:00 PM, families remember their children around the state and across the nation. This would unify these, unify these parents in tribute to their children. And whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. And whereas in honor of the thousands of children that die each year in Minnesota, infants remembered in silence respectfully request that October 15th, 2024, be recognized as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day, uh, be it so resolved by the city council of the city of Casson. So if you remember that on the 15th, appreciate that. On to public forum, we've got one card, Mr. Norrie.
Uh, my comments are about the new neighbor access easement agreement requirement that's proposed in the new fence ordinance that's gonna be voted on, uh, I believe October 23rd. That states that before you can build a fence in Casson, you need to have a neighbor access agreement filed with the clerk in Manorville, changing the deed to your property. Uh, it's my understanding that citizens can do their own agreement and or hire attorneys to do that agreement. Uh, they're able to self-write that agreement and negotiate it with the city attorney. And I, I believe that could be a lot of people building fences having to do that. Um, and that would need to be done before final approval to build fences. Uh, I'm, I'm simply, I'm opposed to the city spending tax payer dollars to negotiate fence agreements or to enforce fence agreements between neighbors. Uh, they're normally civil issues. I don't think the city should waste public resource on that. Uh, I, I'd like someone to answer who benefits from a neighbor access fence agreement? Who benefits from that? Is it the neighbors? Is it the city? Is it one neighbor over the other? Who gets hurt from a neighbor fence agreement? Does one person get hurt possibly, or could there be anything that could not, not work out on that? Requiring citizens to change the deed to their property and the deeds to the neighbors' properties to include a fence agreement before building a fence does not benefit anyone, including the city. So I ask you guys, please develop a normal, simple fence ordinance without a neighbor access easement requirement that be filed, changing the deed to your property, uh, without a two or three foot setback requirement. Please develop a fence ordinance that, that does not require citizens to get legal advice and does not require citizens to spend money on an attorney to draft an agreement just to build a simple fence on your own property. I'd like you to consider doing that and be very involved in the fence ordinance that, that potentially does get passed. I know the zoning board is putting that together. Uh, they're not very approachable. You guys are very approachable because you can come to a meeting and speak like this. The zoning board, the people that are actually developing this ordinance, their emails and their phone numbers are not even made available, uh, for the public to get involved. And that board is not approachable. The, you can't, you can't communicate with that board. So, so please, uh, I'd like you guys to maybe step up and be the ones to take over this fence ordinance, um, uh, maybe with the leadership of the mayor and make sure that that ordinance does address the issues that I brought up back in June that led, that, that have led to the development of the new ordinance. Thank you very much, you guys. I appreciate everything.
Thank you. Okay, on to F1, feedback from EMS committee.
Sure. Uh, we had a good EMS committee meeting last week, discussed a number of items and just wanted to let you know, um, a lot of it had to do with the capital improvement plan for the fire department. So, uh, one thing the EMS board has kind of directed us to do is to start those meetings with the township early. So, um, we'll be starting those meetings a little earlier than we have in the past. Those five-year contracts with our township coverage are coming due in. Um, they'll start a new contract in 2025. So, I've just put that, uh, CIP back in your packet again. They discussed a couple of things, basically looking at that tanker two, the 1995 one, looking at, uh, potential replacements for that. And part of that is those tankers are mostly utilized with the townships. Um, so anyway, just wanted to let you know that EMS is gonna continue to talk about the, uh, the CIP for the fire department and will be, uh, working with, uh, trying to make sure we have a good funding plan in place to, uh, support the fire department's capital. So, that was anything else from the board members, but that was what I had, just wanted to highlight for you.
All right, thanks for working on that. Onto GO business, number one, update Dodge County Housing Trust Fund.
Sure. Including your package, you've got a couple of items. I attended their most recent meeting, uh, last month and, um, it's regarding that residual lot out at, uh, the Vale subdivision. Um, and including your package, you've got kind of the agenda and then, um, kind of what they're looking at doing is, um, it's about a one acre lot, but it's got kind of an odd shape. As you can see in there, it's sort of a blog. Um, what they're looking at is, they're looking at purchasing this lot and I think that you've heard that before. Um, we're looking at a $50,000 cash payment and then $50,000 in assessments for the project to recoup those costs that we had for establishing utilities and things like that. Um, they're looking at these townhome models. Um, and their plan right now is for the Dodge County Housing Trust Fund to purchase those, um, the lot, and then they would be gifting that to First Homes, which does, um, basically they do, uh, housing for veterans and things like that, childcare and stuff like that. So, what they're looking at is they're looking at two adaptive disabled units, two veteran units, and then two workforce housing units of the six. So, um, I know, I've talked this over with the EDA board and things like that. We're, we're excited to see something like this because we feel like with the SRAM, uh, potential SRAM development with those row townhomes, the apartment complex that's being, the parking lot was being poor today. It's a ton of concrete out there. If you ever get off to Vale, you can check that out. And adding some units like this, we feel like the strategic priority of housing in Casson that was set up by the council a couple of years ago, we've got, made a lot of progress on that. We feel like we may be able to sort of shift in some other focus areas for the EDA, for, for our efforts for staff too. So anyway, just wanted to let you know they're getting their funding together and I expect to see a, uh, see some stuff from them here in the next couple of months. So, any questions anybody has on what they're looking at doing there? Otherwise, that's what I've got for that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that for Tim? Okay, thanks, Tim. Uh, then you added a contract for MPA.
That's right. So in Dropbox, you can see that, that agreement. Uh, we received that back this morning. So I did, I know it's a little short notice. Um, I did ask the mayor just to include tonight. We don't absolutely need a decision tonight. It's up to your comfortability level. Um, the terms of that agreement are similar to the ones that were approved, uh, for our, um, Public Workers Union. Um, they're with a 6% increase in the first year, a 4% increase in the second year, and a 3% increase in the third year. They're exactly the same terms. Um, there aren't any other changes. There's no grade changes. Um, so it's a pretty straightforward contract. It only covers one employee currently. That would be the administrative assistant at the police department. Um, historically, that has fluctuated between three, one and three members. Um, currently it only covers one. So, up to the board, if you have any questions, uh, let me know. Otherwise, you know, if you'd like to approve it tonight, we certainly could do that.
Any questions? It makes sense. It just piggybacks on its technicality why it's not part of the same unit. So, I'll make the motion to approve that contract as presented.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Tim. Uh, that was it on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. New business, fire department requests for increase to pension. You got a fire chief handed out an updated form with the new, uh, the actual state fire aid that came in in '24. So that was the difference between what's in Dropbox and what you have in front of you. About $19,400 into that state aid. Um, I had a chance to talk to Joe right before the meeting. I'll let you speak here in just a minute, but, um, so my thought is I'll just share my thoughts with everybody and go from there and let Joe say his, what he's got to say. Um, I think some increases is warranted with the performance of the, the funds. Um, personally, I would like to see, and I don't know what the exact number would be, but have, you know, Tim and, and Joe work together on this to come, but just kind of a, uh, to always plan for the contingency of what if, you know, the worst-case scenario in the market, because basically these are market funds that are backing this and it's fluctuation in the markets. If we have a 2007, 8, 9 again, or a 2000, 2001 or two, you know, is, is a 10% buffer enough? I'd like to see maybe this first year, we go to, you know, a 25, 20, 25%, and then councils going forward to encourage councils going forward to revisit this every year. Just make it an annual part of the thing, you know, wherever it is, whatever time of year, it could be twice a year. Um, but if funds keep still doing well, then, then make those adjustments. Because what I would hate to have happen is if we go too much and then we do have a big market downturn, unexpected retirements were, because when money comes out, you know, we're, we're funding, you know, we have that liability accounted for, but then that's less funds earning whatever it's earning also. So, um, and then just kind of play that by year every year. But then, if you get into a situation where, hey, it's, it's 3% over our target, then there's a 3% increase to the pension. But not to get into a situation where we'd have a big drawdown and have to either talk about cutting the pension, which nobody wants to do. In that case, then the city's gotta come up with the money to get to the required pension requirements, which if we have a big market turn, downturn, everybody's gonna be in a pinch. We may not have those extra funds somewhere to do that. So, to avoid having to go back to that uncomfortable conversation and saying, hey, when we know we increased the pension 40% last year, but things took a turn and now we gotta cut it 10%. That's not something I don't think the council will be interested in doing. I don't think our volunteers would be wanting to hear either. So, that's just my two cents. So if anybody's got anything, talk. Joe, if you wanna just share anymore or?
Yeah, so basically, if you look at the, if you look at the numbers that we've got there, currently as we stand, um, we've got a 153% surplus, and I'll just speak to the numbers based on what, what the mayor was referring to. Uh, so if you look at that currently today with no change, um, if we had to pay out everything that we are required to pay out, um, that leaves us with a $274,000 surplus. Um, as you work down with the new numbers, um, at the, the increase of the $1,000, um, add to the pension to 34, um, that leaves us with a little over $100,000 surplus still. Um, I don't know exactly off the top of my head. I mean, we can find those numbers, but when the, when the market crashed in, in what, eight, nine, 10, um, those years when the city had to contribute, um, the highest annual, um, I believe was right around that 35, 36,000, and that was the first year. Um, and then it, it, the contribution that the city had to make drastically dropped from there. So I, I don't necessarily disagree with the mayor to make sure that we're, that we're covered, but I think 25% is, is a little excessive. Um, if you look at even the, the 110%, um, you know, that's just shy of, just shy of 70,000. Um, you can see our, our performance last year, 2023, um, we were a little over 15%. Um, if you updated the number, the current balance number for the 2024 with the 69,000, um, we're, we're probably pretty close to that, if not above. Um, and with the way the, the markets are continuing, obviously, like the mayor said, who, who knows what tomorrow brings and what the, what happens, what happens with the markets. So, um, I would still, I guess I would still, you know, hope that you would approve the, the number that was requested. Um, and then if we need to, uh, adjust, you know, from there, uh, the plan is, is to continue to come around this time of year every year, um, with this, with this financial information, um, to see where we're at and to, to, one, to give you an update, and then two, just to, um, if there's money there to request a, an increase, then, then request an increase. Um, but yeah, so that's on the, on the retirement portion.
You know, Joe, instead of just using two years of backdating now that I look at this, maybe it would make sense to have a little bit longer, you know, uh,
Well, and the reason-
period of information.
Yeah, the reason that two years is that's, that's when we switched everything over.
Sure, no, and I know like, that was one of, I was a catalyst. I really wanted us to get switched over and I think-
Yep.
You've, you've probably seen your performance improve dramatically since-
Oh, absolutely.
So I mean, I'm really glad about that, but I think what would be, what would be good would be to look, you know, usually when, when I look at like the city's investment portfolio, I try to track performance over a longer period of time.
Yep.
So I mean, because obviously one year could be 20, one year could be three.
Yeah.
I think if we could take a little bit larger average-
Yep.
We could say, okay, average return over the five years is 7.1%.
Yeah.
That would give us a little bit better number to work off. And then, you know, if you kept having 15% a year, you're gonna see that average come up, you know, as we cycle those lower years. Because I know just from trying to remember, I think a couple of those years was like 5% maybe.
Yeah, you say historically, we've been somewhere between 5 and 10%.
Right. So no, I'm really excited to see these. And I think, you know, if Joe and I sit down with it, we could certainly, uh, you know, kind of hash it out and maybe come back with, uh, with something at a, you know, our next meeting or one of the meetings this fall. If that works for council? Paul, you have a question? Look like you've got a question.
Um, I just wanted to piggyback on what the mayor said and, um, and what you just said is that I bet if we looked at 2022 numbers, they would not be as rosy. Um, and while 2024, um, numbers in here at the 3,400 shows a surplus of 100,000, when, when you got a balance of 800,000, like a 12 or 13% drought on the market and suddenly your surplus is gone.
Right.
So, and that's basically what happened in 2022. So I don't, I don't wanna have a situation where we're not having a surplus anymore. So, some, some value greater than 2,400, I can see easily being warranted. 3,400 might be a little high this year. This is all my thoughts.
And then one of the things to keep in mind too is that it's not 100% driven by market performance. So, it's increasing by the 69,000 because the, is it the 2% aid? Is that what this is? That, that, so the 2% money has to go to fund the pension regardless of market condition. So there's gonna be some increase by that 2% money regardless, right? That's every year. We don't, we just don't know the dollar amount till it comes in exactly.
Yes.
Um, so it's not 100% market driven, but partially. So that's where I think you guys could come up with some, whether it's 25%, right? That's just a number I pulled out of my, without doing math, because I got it right about to 3,000 versus 2,400, about 25% increase in the pension.
Just so council knows too how, how this pension works. Um, so you, you see the deferred member liabilities and then the active member liabilities. Those active member liabilities were required regardless of whether you have six months on or you've got 20 years on. We're required to cover those years of service and those dollars. Um, even though if we have members that are under 10 years, aren't eligible to be paid out that pension, we, we are required to carry those dollars for them. Um, so if, you know, and, and the reason you have that is if for some reason the city were to say, we're gonna dissolve the fire department and the city of Casson would no longer have one, um, those pension, you know, those pension dollars would have to be paid out. Um, not all of those active member pension dollars unless every single one of our members was over-
Ten years.
Over 10 years. So, and I can get the, like Tim said, I can get the, the more historical data from, from years past, um, and then also get you that active roster so you kind of know, um, you kind of know what that is. But it's a, it's a difficult formula that the state has put together for that, so.
I did follow up with Lindsay Derby, who is the Secretary of Treasury for the Relief Association, and she gave me some other information. Uh, one thing to keep in mind is that with the balance that the fire department has, starting in 2024, it will require an audit. So up until this point, they haven't had $750,000 in assets. And so they actually haven't been audited. So instead of being audited, ABDO, ABDO has prepped their 1099s and their 1016, or 1096s. And so they really haven't been audited. It's been more of a, a document they have that's created. It's not an audit. So going forward, that'll provide us with a little bit more, um, good evidence to support pension increases. It'll be a little easier to see where their numbers are going, there and from.
And it's been a couple of years since we've been audited. The state recently changed that from 500,000 to 750,000. So now this year, that will be back over, will be, will be audited again. But, but years past, we've had, because we were over 500, we, we've had audits completed, so.
Yeah. So I think if that's okay with council, we'll, we'll do some, looking at some more numbers and then come back with the recommendation.
And I have a question for you, Joe. You say your total active member liability, that's where people, you have to carry it no matter how many years, but how many have 10 years or more? I mean, can, is that a number you can give us?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I would get that active.
Okay.
That way you would know who's, you know, what the, what the roster actually looks like. Yep.
Okay.
From a active member versus a, a, a non-qualified.
I just wanted to verify that's what you were talking about.
Yep. Yep.
Perfect. Any other questions? All right, thanks guys for getting there and go over that.
So, the second thing I had on that request, I don't know if you had that.
The $3,000 match?
The match for the-
Yep.
For the retirement.
Yep, so I don't-
It was on the same-
It was on his, uh-
Oh, it's on the same thing on council actually, okay. So that's something we had talked about in years past, which we've done. So we basically said, hey, relief puts in 3,000, we matched 3,000 of pension, just so we got something going in on a regular basis so we don't get stuck in that 2,009 where it's all of a sudden we need 35,000. Because when things go bad, it goes bad for everybody and council at the time had to scrape up 35,000 required to put in. So, I'll make that motion that we do that again this year, uh, to match the $3,000 from the Relief Association to the pension. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Anything else on that or?
No.
Good?
No. If there is any other questions?
You and Tim get together and go over the pension numbers and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave because I have a lot going on right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, administrator's report.
Okay, uh, let's see here. Couple things tonight. Uh, well, biggest one there probably is the Dodge County ambulance. So as I forwarded out that email from Mr. Gangler to everyone last week, um, sounds like the, uh, they had some pushback from the townships, um, with the joint powers group. Um, so their request is for us to discuss, um, instead of the taxing district, to go back kind of the drawing board and look at a joint powers group again, that would encompass all the entities in their service territory, including townships and cities. Um, and I, you know, he asked me to, to bring it to council and I said, okay, I'll bring it to council. I know previously when we, you had talked to him, I think all the way back in January of last year, you know, the feedback from council at the time was they were looking, they were more interested in the taxing district. So, um, you know, I guess that's kind of where, where that is. I'm just looking for your feedback and, and see if you have any, uh, thoughts on where it is.
I have some. Anybody else have anything before I have thoughts?
I've got a question, and I, I may have asked this before and forgot the answer, but the, if I remember, the, the reason we didn't like this is because it gets put into our budget and is kind of not transparent, I guess, why we're having such an increase. And is it possible for us to do this levy using this joint power, but make it like a special assessment so that, because when you have a special assessment, a special assessment levied against you, there's a description of what it is. So then-
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that the special assessment process would cover that. Uh, what you could do is you could add a user fee onto the utility bills, for example. You know, you could say, you know, this is the public safety, you know, ambulance district user, user fee, and that would go out to each account then. So I mean, that would be to your transparency focus. It would be very clear what that, that bill was for.
Yeah.
Special assessments are really statutorily created for certain projects, like street projects and things like that. They're not-
This is the EMS project to keep the ambulance alive.
Could you, along Paul's lines there?
It's a good question. I just, I don't think, no, I can do some research and I'd be glad to do that. But my understanding of like the 420, you know, 429 bond series is what those statutory, you know, special-
Right. Because secondarily, if for some reason we decided we don't, we don't need this anymore, we can just mix the special assessment. Right?
Special assessment would be different. So I, what I, I'll piggyback on what you're saying. Is there a way to just get an extra line on the property tax statement? Because you got, you know, city of Casson, a lump number. The school has locally approved operating levies, cap, and there's, there's one for the debt and there's one for the operating levy, like two separate lines. Could we have, you know, general levy, EMS levy?
Now I can check on that. Um, as far as, you know, that's kind of why we're looking at that tax district.
Could we just add a line, there's a special assessment, there's requirements to assess, then you have to do for so long, I mean, that-
But because that way at least the, the people will be able to see why the taxes are going up. And then if that line disappears and the number didn't go down, they can be like, well, what are you using that money for now?
Right.
Right? Which obviously they could do if they go look at the budget, but, you know, most people aren't gonna go look through our hundreds of pages of budget every year, so.
I think putting it as an assessment on the utility bill would be a hot disaster as far as constituents are concerned.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying that would be the one way to provide that transparency. You know, I, I, I agree with that. I'm not interested in increasing that, but I mean, if that's what the council's looking at, so.
We get feedback on that.
I think the idea is though that if, okay, anyway, I, I, I like where Paul's going with that. If we can get a special line, that'd be awesome. I don't know what the rules, requirements are for doing that.
True.
Special assessment's probably, probably just the wrong verbiage, because I think there's strings that go with the special assessment. I'm not sure.
The state needs to pass a law to allow it-
Right.
To be able to do the assessment.
We gave ourselves some time at, at the last meeting, because we did what, 40,000 we put aside? Was that the number-ish? So we've given ourselves a little bit of time to think about this.
In my, my opinion is that it seems like it's going back to the drawing board. I'm making some assumptions, right? Which is dangerous sometimes, but it's just, we know what was going with the taxing district and then the townships and the, what do you call it?
Joint powers.
Joint powers. And then the last couple of conversations we had was over representation. That kind of hit a wall. Maybe they go, maybe, maybe they would have not, you know, we were never asking for majority on the board. We were just asking for an extra voice, since we're funding over 60% of it, just have an extra voice, which we could always be outvoted. Well, it seems like now that the townships with the joint powers not gonna probably go forward, it seems like we're, whatever we decide could possibly disrupt the whole thing. Because if we just say, hey, we'll give you our 40,000, 45,000, we're out, you guys do what you want with the rest of it. It's kind of where I'm leaning right now, because they're, the urgency for the ambulance isn't as much as it was a year ago, because legislature did come with, through with a one-time payment to them for this year, which they may consider again next year. So they've got time to figure this out. But if we stick with our commitment, that city of Casson is committed to making sure we have viable ambulance service for our citizens in town, it's 40 or 45, whatever that number was, the 1% we added to the budget, we're gonna write you a check and give it to you.
Right.
And we should also encourage him to go back to the other communities and ask them if they're willing to do the same thing.
And I, I know like the Southeast League is still working with the state and the ambulance services to look at trying to get more funding for the ambulance service, for the whole Southeast Minnesota.
So I think if we stick with our, what we committed to, tell them to go back to the drawing board on the rest of this, because I think that's what they're gonna have to do anyway.
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't sound like, and I, and it's nothing against the townships, but when you get the townships, I've had some experience at some township meetings that Tim had attended years ago. It's just the communication just isn't 100% fair all the time. Um, so I, I don't, they're gonna have a real hard time with the townships.
I mean, I guess the, the issue with the taxing district, if, if representation was an issue on- I mean, I guess the, the issue with the taxing district, if, if representation was an issue on that, with four entities, it will only be assurated when you add another eight townships in.
Oh, yeah.
Because how, how does that work, you know, in terms of breaking it down and costs and being outvoted? I mean, I, so I think where the mayor's going might be a good temporary solution. You know, I am glad to go back to AJ and the ambulance and say, hey, you know, we're gonna continue to meet, we'll talk about it. You know, if you've got a proposal, like, it's all hypothetical right now. They, they just wanna know if we're absolutely out. And I think the answer is we're not absolutely out of anything. We just, we'd like to hear more details. Because if there's a workable thing that they can come up with that works for the council, you know, then council's gonna consider that. But if there isn't then, we've said, hey, we're gonna commit to giving you this funding. As far as I know, none of the other communities are voluntarily doing that, you know. To be honest with you, if all the communities voluntarily gave, they wouldn't have to do anything. They could just say, hey, you know, everybody's contributing, you know, a, a percentage, you know, whether it's 1% of their budget or whatever, like, kinda like we're doing. You know, I think that, that, you know, ambulance might be, might be viable and that, that's probably the best solution really. Cause it just becomes something where people get used to it and it's voluntary, you know. But, uh, but I mean, I hear your feedback, so.
But something like that, I mean, yes, we can do it now, but down the future, they're gonna have different township boards. There'll be different councils in different cities. People might not wanna volunteer.
Well, and the, the thing is, it gives, it gives everybody, including the city of Cassin, who would be funding the majority of it, regardless if it's joint powers, taxing district, whatever it is. To not fund as much or fund more based on circumstances. You know, come make your case to the council at the time, hey, here's the budget crunch we're in, we're asking every city to, hey, you've been doing 1% of your budget. We're asking everybody to raise it to 1.2 because we have this going on. Or hey, it's, you know, can we count on your 1% again, you know? Which is more work for them, but at the end of the day. When the townships did, I don't, I don't know how they're gonna get that many people together, especially in the next two months before we have to finalize our budget. I just think without, the urgency isn't there what it was a year and a half ago when they had zero funding coming from the state. Um, we can at least get through the next year to be able to get this better, I guess.
Have you been with some of the townships to talk about the agreement, the five-year agreement for the fire department? Could that be something you bring up? Well, see, I don't wanna cloud the waters there, just like bringing enough of those meetings and Joe could speak to that too. And, and part of it is that a lot of the township boards are in big transition as well. Historically, those have tended to be some of our senior residents in Dodge County and it certainly is the case right now. So they'll have a lot of new board members coming up, but I mean, you know, we could certainly, I can let them know that we're talking about it. You know, I mean, I think AJ may be doing more outreach to the townships too. I mean, at the end of the day, it's Dodge Center Ambulance and they have to be the catalyst to try and bring these groups together and we wanna work with them as a partner. I think that's our absolute goal is to be in a partnership with, with folks to keep that ambulance service viable, like you said, Mr. Mayor. So if that's the feedback, then that's certainly what I can bring back to them and, and I'm always glad to meet with them and see kinda what framework they're looking at, so. Any other thoughts from anybody else?
Well, I think that's a good way to start again.
Okay, great. Awesome. Well, I appreciate that feedback. Otherwise, a couple of other items in my report. We've started our electric rate study for, for this, late this fall. UFS is a different company. It's Utility Financial Solutions out of Michigan. Historically, we've used MRES. We're switching over to them. They have a USSF folks. We had our first meeting and we'll be working with them. I'm hoping to have a, a result for us in early January so that we can either look at rate setting for 26 or for 25 in January. Load forecast, at the same time, we're working on the electric load forecast and that's changing quite a bit because of increases in load. We, uh, we've had increases with some of the new commercial buildings on the south side and as the residential development starts to pick up again. If you've been out past the dump road there, you've seen that a lot of dirt moving going on for Mr. Bigelow's subdivision out there and potentially a lot of development for the residential the next 18 months. Mentioned P&amp;Z look forward. Ian's gonna be working on completing that and I think they've got their P&amp;Z meeting next Monday night. So hopefully that'll be, that'll be coming forward. We've got a parcel from Mr. Shute breaking off some property there on the north side. And then I wanna just correct something. So I did hear from administration at Dodge County today, they did purchase that land north of Quick Trip. However, they are not planning on adding it to their county park at this time. So they're not looking at requesting that. So just wanted to clarify that, that they have requested that we return the platted right-of-way for the baggage road. However, they're not looking at expanding the park on that 10-acre parcel north of Mr. Foot and Mr. Toon's house at this time. So talked to them today and they just wanted to be very clear about that. So correct that a little bit, um, yeah.
That's it. The chunk above Quick Trip, we had kept a little strip on the west side, right?
That was that baggage road, yep.
We were also keeping a strip to the, a strip to the east, like going between the two properties for access.
Between the two homes. Yeah, that is, that is a platted right-of-way. Ian's got it right there. He can kinda show it.
Can we relinquish that too?
Would you highlight the turnback area that they're looking at? There you go. So that parcel right there, the county engineer indicated they are looking at having that turned back to the county. And of course, you can jump in here if you'd like to, Brandon. I see you kinda moving in the back of my eye here. He's cornering. Uh, but the other areas they're not looking at this time from what the administrations told me at Dodge County.
So does it affect? Doesn't have a Quick Trip in here, so I'm, which?
That's right there.
Right, not that you had, not that you had, but you can see where they purchased. That's the lot there.
Is.
They purchased that area up on the north side.
That whole strip, right.
That 10 acres.
And where's?
And they want the little strip on the left.
Yeah, so that, that area that Ian had highlighted, highlighted again Ian, there's a baggage road. That's, that's what they're looking for as a turnback right now. It's, it was actually county property before. It was given to the city as part of a platted right-of-way for our road expansion. They're not planning on putting a road in there now. And so I think they're looking at turning it out like a gravel driveway of some kind.
That, that little strip to the west of Quick Trip?
That's right, right there. Go ahead, highlight that.
Okay, so I'm sorry if I misunderstood, but I'm not sure my question was answered. The right-of-way in between the two properties that we discussed before, we're keeping that so that Tram had access to that property.
Shute.
Shute, sorry.
Well, that was platted right-of-way. It wasn't something that we created. It wasn't new. It's been there historically.
Yes.
I don't think that they're asking us to turn it back to them at this time.
Right, but the only reason we didn't return it in a prior council meeting was so that there was access to that property. Well, now that the county has that property and they have the property adjacent to it, do they still need that access?
You know, that's a good question. I don't think they do, but, um, you know, I don't think we'll talk to that Brandon a little bit.
Yeah, so it's public right-of-way and that was one of the questions that we posed to the, to the county is if we give the baggage road, which is behind Quick Trip, was where our 16th Street ends now, I can have that road started. But that was all for Shute to develop that and get that baggage road in there and develop the site that the county's now bought. So that really issue goes away and that's not dedicated right-of-way, so it won't be turned back. We, they, the county conveyed that to us in fee title, so we just convey it back to them, if that's what we do on the baggage road. Um, so there is three little stubs of public right-of-way, the shared use between Toon and Foot, the one that you're talking about, then two other ones up the hill. Are going to the north, I guess, right? There's where Ian's at. So my question was to the county is if you're gonna get into the baggage road behind Quick Trip, do we just wanna vacate this right-of-way? If they're not, we don't really have a need for it because nothing was developed there. So I don't know that it's really a need, if they don't want it, maybe we just leave it and see what happens. They're probably just gonna use it and farm it like it's done today. Uh, because there's really no public use of that public right-of-way, so vacating would potentially be appropriate steps. Why, that was why I asked the question.
And I think we had discussed at P&amp;Z that vacating was the way we wanted to go, but Mr. Shute himself came and said he'd like to keep it as access. So since that, that is no longer the case.
I would agree, yep. Cause we wanted to leave it between Foot and Toon's house, cause they have that shared driveway. But then Shute could also potentially use that as an access to his property to the west. That property west now is the county's. He's not gonna develop. The county's gonna keep it as something, parkland or.
Whatever they wanna do with it.
A buffer, yep. So you're right, they have access to the west, so we're not cutting anybody off by vacating that.
The two landowners wanted us, the two homeowners wanted us to keep it for plowing purposes.
For plowing purposes, um, so we could still vacate it and tell them to plow it, continue plowing it to whatever.
It's a shared driveway, it's not.
That was, my argument, it was not a public use no longer.
Right, so I think we should revisit that then, assuming the county has no intent to use that.
Yeah, the city could start the vacation process too and just say, it's vacated and then give the land back to the two property owners and they'll split it and build a shared driveway.
Need a public hearing for that?
Yeah, you have to vacate right-of-way. Yeah, so the city could just go and just vacate it and then same thing to the north, it would go to the county and it would just become their land, so.
If, if the county has, has no plans of developing it, then I think that we definitely should look at vacating it, because.
I assume they would have. I don't know why they conveyed that they didn't want to, but, cause there's no public use, that's why we would dedicate it as right-of-way, so.
If we're gonna give the baggage road back, then we start looking at.
Yep, so you have two steps. I think you could freely convey the property, the baggage road, convey it back to the county, cause they conveyed it to us. And then just do a public hearing to vacate the three right-of-ways. And then obviously we should talk to the two property owners and let them know what the city's intent is, cause I'm sure they'll have interest in that as they did before, so.
I would say get the ball rolling on that, cause there's no reason to have it if there's not.
Cause that's the only reason we kept it originally.
Yep, we were gonna build a road in there for Shute to develop and, you know, totally own, so that issue's gone away. And they conveyed it to us for nothing, so I think it'd be appropriate to give it back, so, but.
Big money, big money.
I don't make.
We'll trade them for a better police service.
Yeah, but Quick Trip wasn't there before, so, you know, value's gone up.
Yeah.
Not much.
Neighborhood. How about we just convey it back for, same price we got it conveyed to us for?
Alright, well, so we can take that as direction and we can sort of maybe start getting the, certainly I think the feedback last year at the council level from the residents was, was strong, as I recall. So we'll certainly get them in the loop and that's a council decision, obviously, whatever you guys decide to do, but we'll definitely, we can definitely get this started, right Ian?
Yep.
Alright, awesome. Uh, let's see, I got a couple of other things in here. Just wanted to highlight the, the load forecast PowerPoint is in your, in your, your packet there. As well as the next item here, which it might be more interesting, a little bit shorter at least. It's a request from the Goodrich Fellows Group to waive some deferred interest. A letter from those folks. It's for a parcel that is on the southwest part of town here. Um, it's adjacent to the, the trailer court and Highway 57, kinda the south side of Manorville Avenue there. Um, so they are looking at potentially a transaction where that parcel would change hands. Um, so they are requesting that we look at waiving those deferred, that deferred interest as part of, we have an assessment on that property from the, from the construction of Manorville, South Manorville. When that was done several years ago. After reviewing that agreement, if the council's comfortable with it, I am comfortable with waiving that interest as part of a transaction with the adjoining property owner. I think that would be beneficial for that parcel to move forward for development. I think there are a lot of benefits greater than the, the deferred interest, which has been calculated out, so.
So they're looking at selling it to a developer?
Selling it to the, yes, to a developer.
Someone, and is there plans to actually do something on it?
Yes, there are.
Okay, so my whole thing would be is if they're just gonna transfer title, then it sits there for another 20 years.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it would be largely beneficial to the sub-development of southwest land overall, because it would allow for some additional utility extensions in a more cost-effective manner.
They know of the water issues there, you know, I mean, so they'll be working with this.
The folks they'd be working with are well aware. We've made all the folks involved. When we did that wetland delineation, the, everyone's quite aware of that situation where the water cuts through there. I mean, it's about 10-acre parcel and right now it is, like this year was so dry, it was, was farmed, although they have soybeans throughout this today. But I think there's maybe about two parcels there that are feasible for usage, so. Could we have it set up where if they don't start a process within a certain amount of time, that interest goes back? I think what, what I'd like to do is if the transaction doesn't happen, we won't waive any deferred interest. The transaction happens, then I think it would be part of a larger negotiation with the, the folks involved, whether it's Goodrich Fellows or the acquirers of the property.
I like that option.
And I mean, I, you know, it is deferred interest, so it isn't something we'd collect until 2032 if the property doesn't transact. So I think it makes sense for us to collect a larger assessment. It's a $125,000 assessment, so.
And get something done with the property.
And get something done with the property, right.
And moving, yeah.
That would, that property would then be annexed into city limits as well.
It's been something that's been wanted done for.
Okay, did you have a comment on this, Brandon?
Nope.
Okay, um, I've got some questions, cause I'm not fully understanding. Uh, so that property, again, could you highlight that again Ian? It's this, it's this property that's been a little bit problematic with some of our discussions in the past, right? That is currently not in city limits.
That's correct.
Okay, um, what is this deferred interest that we're talking about? What is, what is the interest?
See the road, the road that was built to the east of that property?
Okay.
When that came in.
They got deferred for.
There was a road easement, just like Highway 57 or Third, Fourth and.
Okay, so we assessed it to them, but only if it developed?
When it developed is when, developed or after so many years, 2032, they have to pay it.
No matter what.
Or whenever they develop between now and then. But 2032, it's due regardless.
So they're requesting us to?
Waive any interest.
Any interest.
Wave, oh, waive only the interest. They're still gonna play the, just pay the.
Yes.
Well, you read the letter, I mean, I think, I'll take whatever we'll give them.
They'll take both. But I mean, I'm looking at deferred interest, not waiving any part of the assessment.
Okay, and how much was the assessment and how much is the interest?
Uh, the assessment was 125,000 and I think the deferred interest, I'd have to calculate it goes by day, but it's, I think in the subject between, it's about 15,000 right now.
Well, that seems like a pretty good deal for us, assuming that part of the agreement is that it annexes into the city.
And somebody gets done with it, yeah.
Cause that, we'll collect that 15,000 real quick as property taxes, right?
Yeah, if something were built, it would certainly be beneficial, right, exactly, yep. And I think that would be something we would expect to happen in the near future, if it was able to be developed.
If they stayed with land though, for a while it won't. Right, but I think if whoever's, I don't know all the details, but I imagine there's a plan for it and they wouldn't be knocking on the door.
Just wouldn't tell you what the property taxes currently on the property?
It's, it ain't much.
Right, but it'll go up by 50% in the city, right?
And, and I think like Tim said though, I think the bigger value to the city, if we look at it, is the ability to get utilities across there.
Yes.
Where now we really can't.
Where we can.
Right, Brandon, I mean, that kinda.
Well, that's assuming that whoever buys it wants us to run utilities across it.
Right.
I think they do.
I think they do.
Yes.
And we could talk, we can talk more about it if you have more questions, Paul, I'm glad.
No, okay, you've, you've cleared up what I was confused about.
Any other concerns, questions on that? I, I'm in favor of the interest, waive the interest, but not the assessment.
Yes, I agree.
Contingent on a sale happening. Anybody else?
No, I, I think that's good. And if no sale happens, then.
Which is back to, we're right back to where we were.
Yep.
Okay, do you need a motion on that?
Yeah, so you've got the letter in there, what they're requesting and so based on what the mayor said, we're looking at forgiveness of the deferred interest. Yeah, I'd be looking for a motion from council on that.
I would make that motion.
Thank you, Dan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. So we have a motion and a second to waive the deferred interest on that property if a sale goes through. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Engineers report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Council. Just, uh, quick updates tonight, two of them. Just a heads up, that special assessment hearing is gonna be coming forward. We're looking at November 20 to start that ball rolling. I just wanted to give the council a heads up on that, our Southwest reconstruction project. Um, and then another Eighth Avenue, First and, I'm sorry, Second and Third Avenue off of Main Street that we've talked about in the past. So, um, those reports and whatnot will be coming, so we'll start getting busy here over the winter, so. Uh, that was one item. Second item, we have a staff meeting tomorrow morning to talk about the water tower and the booster station. The booster station's gonna be right here by City Hall. Um, I'm gonna have some building materials and colors for that booster station. Um, staff had talked about it briefly, um, they kinda matched City Hall colors here, um, cause it's gonna be located close to City Hall. Do you guys want more input than that or are you guys good with us picking out materials and moving it forward?
It's time to paint St. City Hall different colors, is what you're telling me?
Well, yeah.
Do we get solar panels on it too?
Well, it's not gonna be that big, but.
One.
One cell.
You can charge your phone on it if you want to.
Okay, well, and then obviously we're gonna make the tower look like the other towers. Um, we kinda made that decision previously, so. That's what we're doing moving forward. If you guys don't want final selection, we'll select it at staff level and we'll find.
Think that makes it look good.
I didn't pick out any colors in my house either, so I don't need to do it here.
Well, I had, I just wanted to give an update. Um, yeah, we're moving forward. We got plans in here, ready to rock here shortly, so.
I know Dan had one question and I know you and I talked about it, but I just wanted to reiterate. So that section, you know, up on Main Street, we're looking at paving behind the Legion next year. There's those two skinny parcels. And Dan's question was about, and Dan, you can speak to it too, but just making sure that it wouldn't make sense to pave those right now. I know Park and Rec had thought maybe locating some pickle, pickleball courts right there actually wouldn't have been a bad site, kinda like what they have in Pine Island. But, um, just looking for your, your feedback on.
I just thought it made sense that you got that 44 feet there that's doing nothing. The city's not been able to sell it. Nobody's interested in it. You know, if we turned that into a blacktop entrance to that parking lot, then you'd have another way in and out of that. And it would alleviate the lot sitting there as an eyesore. It would give you another. But I didn't know if it was anything doable, if it was possible that it would work with a sightline trying to.
There are two things, I heard.
Yeah, there are two things. Pickleball courts is one thing. So after, we had our Park and Rec meeting, you know, a couple of months ago and there were some folks from some of the pickleball clubs that came. And so I know I met with Ben Lang and just to talk about it and said, well, you know, I know Pine Island, they have downtown pickleball courts. Quite popular, you know, people can go to the brewery right next door then. So that was one thought was, well, you know, there is space.
So, that was one thought, was, well, you know, there is space there to do some, not sure if it would be exactly what they wanted, but it might be kinda an interesting feature to add people, bodies downtown. The other thing, so if that doesn't work, which it may not, kinda just spitballing it, looking for good sites, Dan's thought is, is there another way to, you know, utilize that for access or additional parking? And, and, is it worth it or not to do that?
The access, I don't necessarily like with the diagonal parking and pulling it out. And I got, actually, the plans pulled up right now, I mean, we-
Lose space.
It, it works out nice to just run east-west like it does now, and then just come out to driveways to the two side streets, so, I don't know that access pickleball, I mean, it's, we just put, I think, four different pickleball courts in four different locations in, um, Rochester, in their parks, and we're putting in a rural, rural community park in Steel County, um, as we speak right now, so, um, pickleball has been more and more popular, and it seems like we build one court, we end up building four, I think we've even had some of those conversations, so.
I like the pickleball idea.
Yeah, I, I think it would work, bring people downtown.
Access would be tough, you'd lose one, two, three, four, five, six spots, plus you'd have to pull out between those.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like the access. Uh, pickleball's fine, I mean, you got, um, you got a Legion there, might, I'm interested in, you know, having a beer and going out and play pickleball.
You'd have to make sure if you did the pickleball, it's along the front, you'd have to put something to make sure nobody jumps to come in.
Yeah, we, we would fence it.
We'd fence the front off.
Get it all fenced in and whatnot. Oh, I can lay some pickleball courts in there if you'd like, and look at it, and-
I'd like to do something with that lot, it's-
It would, it would add something different to downtown.
Other destination thing.
Yep, you might see people in in the morning, you might, you might see a cop always come back, you know, and all of that.
Well, we just know, like, with the kids, you know, that gym development across the street, you know, and, and as you know, the downtown has already had a substantial, I mean, on a regular day, there's a good amount of traffic, a healthy amount, you know, and then when it's busy, it's kinda too much sometimes. We just thought that, you know, it is making it more of a destination, kind of an i-activity where Legion's got their patio out there, people can kinda have a fun time, and, like I said, I know in Pine Island, they, they actually, it's their, their downtown ice rink that they put lines on.
Might not be that bad if we put a parking lot back there, too.
Now, obviously, we don't have that opportunity with, with the ice rink, but I think that we thought it might be, uh, since we're already in there paving, just something to look at at least, so I, I'd appreciate it if you would.
Yeah, uh, cost-wise, I think, I think the average pickleball's like fifty thousand dollars, I think is the number we've had. I can come back with an updated number, I'm not, I haven't been part of this.
We're looking for lower than that.
Yeah, of course, but, just, just a budget number, just to, I can, I can come back with some of the details and lay some things in there, and just get a budget number, and you guys can make a decision, 'cause the paper's gonna be right there, too, I think, Mr. Regis' point, and doing something, so, yeah, we can look at that.